All right, looks like we're underway again. Sorry for the delay. Before we get started, I got a couple of things. One, I want to make sure Dieter you can hear us and that we can hear you.
I can hear you.
Oh, good.
And we can hear you, so I think we're good there. Check. The next item I have is if you want to participate remotely, as always, go to basalt.net, click on the agendas and minutes tab, and you'll find December 9th, and you'll find all the info to join Zoom meeting there if you'd like to participate remotely. And I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, and Pam, will you please call the roll?
I will happily do that. Let us begin with Hannah Berman.
Here.
Angel Dupre-Buchard.
Here.
Ryan Slack.
Here.
David Knight.
Here.
Dieter Schindler.
Here.
Angela Anderson.
Here.
Rick Stevens.
Here.
The A team is present. All the Ases are in their places.
Hey.
Thank you, Pam. Next up, item two, consent agenda, just as the item two A, which is the minutes, and they are from November 25th, 2025. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Mayor, I move that the town council approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Pam, will you please call the roll?
Sure, I think we can do that by voice vote on that one.
For the consent.
For the consent, yeah.
We can do it voice. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And Dieter, got it? Got it, thank you.
Next up, we have item three, which is our call to the public. So just a couple of reminders. Limit your comments to three minutes. Make sure you sign in at the back of the room. Direct your comments to me directly. And try to be courteous, civil, and constructive. We'll take no decision or take any action except to direct the town manager. Do we have anyone who wants to make public comment?
Yes.
Come on up.
Sorry to keep you waiting.
Yeah, appreciate your patience.
No problem. My name's Chad Russell. I live in Willets. I've lived in the valley since 2008. I've recently moved back. I had to leave to go to take care of some business in Indianapolis for a couple of years, and this was kind of an issue. I will state this first, that I'll never bring up an issue that I do not want to be 100% involved in the part of the solution, and always be constructive with that. What I've noticed is I live in the first, this has been an issue always, but recently it's kind of come to an head. I have three children, six, four and a half, and three. My wife is at home with them now, wondering where I am. But what I've got is with that whole park area on East Valley Road, which is a no-leash dog area, basically, everybody runs around, kids are running back and forth. My child's first grade bus stop is over on Willets Lane, which means he has to cross the street multiple times to get over there if he starts riding the bus. Over the past several years, when I was living in our home in Willets before I left, I've had issues where cars come flying through there. I mean, it goes from 15 miles per hour down to, increases to 20. Obviously, the percentages are significant. But one time, this guy in a big truck came by, I was like, slow down, and I hear people on their porches all summer yelling at everybody in that area, slow down, slow down, slow down. And he was with his child. He drove all the way back around, came back and pulled over to yell at me and like start an altercation over me telling him to slow down. You can kind, you can tell, there's a big difference between 20 and 25 and 30 and whatnot. But what's happened recently with the traffic backup as it goes down to 82, is people are starting to go through in the mornings and bypass all of that to go all the way down East Valley Road and bypass that kind of stop traffic. The other day, my wife was driving, a girl was up behind her, tailgating her, like flashing her lights and stuff, and this is just from, this is 800 feet from leaving the area by Whole Foods and getting into that to our cul-de-sac, and then she tried to pull around her, and then, of course, was telling her she was number one and stuff when she drove by. And the other morning, I was out there walking the dog, and people were literally driving 40 miles an hour out of, because it's not that busy over by Whole Foods at that time to there. Now, they were initially going to do a speed table and all these other things, but for whatever reason, we decided to make the road curvy. People just drive straight down the middle. I'm not sure what the overall solution is, how we go about lowering the speed limit. I think it should be 12 and a half miles an hour, but whatever we need to do, that, I think that needs to be addressed as a safety issue before there's loss of life, especially with kids. My dog's almost been hit there. I mean, so there's major, a significant issue there, someone who goes by and goes by there with children all the time. And so, whatever needs to be done, I'm happy to do. I'll sit there and take pictures of cars when they go, because we do have the speed meter there that, that tells people how fast they're going, but that's disregarded.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, thanks for surfacing that. Gloria, is that something we can look into, just, you know, with the PD? Yeah, thanks for surfacing that, I really appreciate it.
Sir, would you make sure to please sign in so we have your contact information?
Thanks for your patience again, rental behind tonight. Anyone else would like to make public comment? All right, it looks like we are done with that, and we'll move on to item four, which is our mayor, mayor and council reports comments. Floor's open.
I'd like to thank staff. The Willets tree lighting went off without a hitch, it was great. Looking forward to Midland on Friday. And then, obviously, Police Department still isn't here, but they are still just running on low staff, and we're lucky to have such a great group of guys that every time I talk to them, they're all still upbeat, and I just, just all of staff, thank you guys for what you're doing, and happy holidays.
One of my favorite things is the star on Bee Hill.
Yeah.
Getting lit up, and I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge the Everett's, Upton's for keeping that going. Kenny Everett's family provides the power for the star, and I think Bruce Upton is part of the Lions Club that supports that. So it's awesome, and it's always fun to go, oh, it's on, and I always forget it's going to come on. And during COVID, it was truly a great thing to have, because it would shine every night for that old COVID era. It just, just bizarre.
Yeah.
It's cool.
Great comment, yeah, thanks for the star.
Especially coming down Two Rivers, Two Rivers Road from Willets, the Paul Willet and the rivers going like this, and stars lit. Spot on. So thanks to those guys.
Thanks, Rick. Anyone else? Town looks lovely, the lights look lovely, the snow. I know we didn't do it, but it looks great with everything that's out there. Hopefully, we get more of it, and thanks for putting out all the decorations and stuff for the holiday staff, so appreciate that. Let's go ahead and.
One more, I want to actually thank Chris Beiser. He was up in the majority of these trees. I drive up and downtown all the time, and he put, he had so much stuff in his truck for like two weeks, and was just, every time I drove down Main Street, he was up in another tree. So thank you, Chris, for, and the rest of Public Works. I know it was a big undertaking, but he was definitely in a lot of trees, so don't want that to go unnoticed.
Looks great out there.
And the, last but not least, we did approve that fire mitigation project, and if anyone hasn't driven up there, it's pretty wild. I went into a condo in the wilds today, and they created a lot of defensible space, so it's an awesome job by that contractor and everyone for putting that together.
Thanks, Ryan. All right, we'll move on to managers' report, item five.
So I just want to invite everyone to Maryam Midland this Friday, starting at four o'clock with the tree lighting at 5:15.
Be there.
Yeah.
And that will be closed. The street will be closed, so just wanted to put that out there as well.
That's a good heads up. Awesome. Well, next up, we have item six, catching up, getting closer. Item six A, which is our Eagle County presentation, Highway 82 and Elgbell Road project. Richard Davies, and I see Jeff's out there as well. If you want to come up, Jeff? Yeah, 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 absolutely. You gotta be, you gotta be on the mic. Jeff, you're welcome too. Do you want to talk, or? Welcome, guys.
All right.
We're good, everyone can see my presentation?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Ricky Davies, Eagle County Senior Staff Engineer, and I would like to thank everybody for the opportunity to talk about this project. I apologize, I talked a little quick, and actually, the presentation, I did add a couple more slides that aren't in your packet, because I was going through today, and I thought I'd give you a little more information. And if you have questions, feel free to interrupt me, but chances are, I might answer your question if you go through it, so it should be relatively quick. Just want to go through the project background, project schedule, the design, the right-of-way, permits for the project, funding, and maintenance. So the purpose of this project is improvements to the intersection are necessary to improve safety and operations to gain a new CDOT access permit. The design was driven by CDOT's requirement to move Valley Road, or the Valley Road intersection, a minimum of 500 feet from the Highway 82 intersection and minimize the impacts to Sopras Village neighborhood and their main road in. The current design will give East Valley Road traffic free-flow access to the State Highway 82 signal. It will preserve existing infrastructure, including East Valley Road and the Eagle County building parking lots, and it creates an opportunity to expand the Rafta parking lot. Some of the project's schedules. So this project was advertised for construction on November 17th. We had a pre-bid meeting on the 25th. We had questions for the addendum, questions on the project itself. Those were due on the 3rd. Tomorrow, I'll be releasing an addendum with written answers to all the questions that came in. We'll be opening contractor bids on the 17th. The contractor should be selected by the 19th of December, with the contract being signed by the B O C C approximately a month later. And then, we'll have a pre-construction meeting, it's tentatively scheduled for April 25th of 2026, and construction starting April 1st with a completion date of October 30th. Just so you're aware, I don't know if everybody's really familiar with this project or not, but you can see this is the current configuration. You can see my cursor, correct? Yes. So right along here is Highway 82. We have Valley Road that comes in here. Here's the intersection with the signals, and then we have Sopras Village Drive, which comes in here. So part of the problem here, again, is that Valley Road is too close to this intersection. We don't have enough stacking distance while there, I believe the signal timing, last time I was out there watching, is accurate and works, but because of that intersection, it messes with the stacking along East Valley Road. And then again, here's East Valley Road and the existing Rafta parking lot. So how are we reconfiguring this? So Valley Road will come around the existing Rafta parking lot. We're going to change the access to Sopras Village Drive here, and we'll be expanding the Rafta parking lot to the north. I believe my boss, Ben Gertz, was here, I think it was about a month ago, and he presented some of this project, and one of the comments that came up from the town council was to add a slip lane off of Highway 82 directly onto Valley Road, which has been incorporated into the project. As far as the project right-of-way goes, you can see here, this is the Eagle County GIS. All the dashed is actually the town of Basalt. So a portion of the project is in the town of Basalt. Here's just an aerial, same, same thing with aerial, and another outline of the, basically, the town limits on the plan itself, so you can see, obviously, the town of Basalt, and then the majority of the properties in the town of Basalt are owned by Rafta. And I am currently in the process of getting two easements with Rafta. There's a kind of a mix right along where this new Valley Road will be. That is part of Rafta's property, so Rafta will be giving Eagle County an easement, and then where the new Rafta parking lot is, that's Eagle County. So Eagle County will be giving Rafta an easement. Those easements are currently sitting with Rafta. I'm working with Mike Hermes, and I have been trying to contact him about once a week to get what the status is on those easements. Ideally, you'd like to have the right-of-way squared away beforehand, but we're still working on that, but I'm quite confident I will get the easements and all the right-of-way squared away before we begin construction. As far as project permits goes, Eagle County has or will obtain the following Eagle County permits, which is a grading permit, a public way permit, and we just got an amendment to the CDOT access permit, so the access permit is taken care of. I'm under the assumption that Eagle County will need to obtain a town of Basalt, street cut, and right-of-way permit, and then the contractor will be responsible for their own stormwater discharge permit. Funding sources. There are three funding sources on this project, and I guess three phases or two phases, depending on how you want to do it. So Eagle County will be doing the roads, which is phase one. I'll get to where the phases are. Rafta is in charge of the parking lot, which is phase two, and then Eagle County Sustainability is in charge of Phase 2A, which is installing EV charging infrastructure with this project. Again, we'll be putting in all the conduit underground, all the pads, but we will not be putting any charging stations in with this project. There is a plan to put in, I believe, eight chargers that'll feed 16 parking spaces. So again, you can kind of see where the funding is. Eagle County has most of the project. Here in red is phase two, which is Rafta, and the orange part is the Eagle County Sustainability portion. Maintenance. Maintenance responsibilities are still being coordinated between Rafta, Eagle County, and the town of Basalt. Mike Hermes had told me he's already drafted a maintenance agreement, but he's still working on finalizing that. This is the exhibit of that agreement. So Rafta has the majority of this. Everything in the dark green is Rafta. Everything that is yellow would be Eagle County, and let's see, the blue would be CDOT, and down in the corner, the purple would be Sopras Village HOA. So those, that's what I have so far. Are there any questions for me?
Lot of information, yeah.
During construction, what's the access to Crown Mountain going to be like?
I wanted to detour everything, but no, we're required, and with the, in the project special provisions, it states that the contractor has to maintain traffic at all times. They will be allowed to limit roads down to one lane, but they won't be able to close any lanes at all. So access to Crown Mountain will be available. I will work with Becky at Crown Mountain. Maybe we can get on their webpage that it'd probably be best if people are coming to Crown Mountain to come in through the north entrance on Valley Road rather than coming to this intersection, and actually, I would hope most people would avoid this intersection by using Willets Lane intersection or Valley Road and kind of seeing it that way. At least, I would if I was in the area.
Rick, what do you think as far as like coordinating with like tournaments?
Well, there's a 19-team tournament on Mother's Day weekend is the only thing I know about that.
Would they, would they go to?
There's a lot, it's 5,000, I don't know, 3,000.
It's weekend, and they're not going to be working.
They're, yes.
I was just wondering what, how it's torn up.
In the project special provisions, sorry, sorry. In the project special provisions, they are required on holiday weekends to stop all construction that would impact traffic by noon on that Friday, and they wouldn't be able to impact traffic again until the following Monday.
Is that weekends?
And that would be, what's that?
All weekends?
That'd be all holiday weekends, or all holidays.
What's a holiday, I guess?
I believe that's Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day. Again, if there's an issue with Mother's Day, I'm sure we can work with the contractor.
Sure, that's a lot of people. That's why the, the most people, I would think, that come at any one time.
That's a big tournament. We can, we'll work with the contractor and get with Becky at Crown Mountain to make sure that we're out of their way when they come. That's a big tournament we don't want to mess with, so.
One more thing, the park and ride, the expansion of the park and ride, can you kind of, is that that green buffer that's kind of between the road now and the Eagle County parking lot?
Yes.
On the left, as you go in there, there's a big strip where everybody. There's a campaign signs and stuff. Screen, sorry, let me get a different screen up.
The parking lot would be expanded from here. Obviously, this will stay, and it'll expand up through here, in this general area. And then Valley Road will be rerouted along here.
So it'll be above the parking, between the building and the park?
Yes, it'll, yeah, it'll be between Valley Road and East Valley Road. And then you'll, as mentioned, we'll have a slip lane here, so it'll be in between of all of those, those right ways.
It's a pretty good grade change across that. Could be retaining walls or something?
I think, I thought it was relatively flat out there.
Yeah.
And I guess which, which, where are you saying?
It's pretty flat. Well, when you enter Crown, when you enter and turn right into Crown, there's that area that's to the left. And there's probably, it's pretty flat, but.
Up in this area? Because again, the slip lane, the project limits are right around here.
But back to your Raft, existing Rafta parking lot and where you're crossing over to the Eagle, in that area that's got a triangle in the middle of it, right in there, I guess it's, it always appeared to me to be.
I'm not very concerned with the topography.
Yeah, okay.
I guess, I don't know if this helps easier or not, I will be the project manager during construction. I'll be on site three to four times a week. And because this, this project is a CDOT access permit, so CDOT requires a CAPUS, which is Consultant Access Permit Inspection Staff. So we'll be, because of, I believe it's a conflict of interest, Eagle County cannot perform that, but I will, a part of that job requires public information, and I will be the public information officer for this project. So any questions that you guys have about the project before, during, and after construction, feel free to contact me at any time. I'll be sending out weekly emails on this project, as well as press releases, and we'll have a website that will have the project's schedule and updates of how the projects come in.
As much communication as you can do in that plan, the better, you know, social media, all the, you know, there's that Basalt community, Facebook, you know, a lot of people in this, beyond the town limits read that.
I believe we'll also, on our Eagle County Facebook, we'll be putting up updates along with the press releases and so forth.
People will still be surprised and frustrated, but, you know.
Yes, the contractor is also required to put up changeable message boards with their, when construction starts, I believe 10 days before construction starts. I've done this a number of times, and it doesn't make a difference if the signs there, somebody's going to call me and say they don't know anything about this construction.
Yeah.
But, you know, construction is construction. It's going to be a mess while it happens, but it'll be much better once it's done.
I just have one other question. You had mentioned the light when you started. This is outside the scope of this, but since, you know, like, all the lights are synced, right?
Yes.
We did that huge project. How often do we check that? Like, the sync's like right, or like, it just, you'll see coming over how bad the traffic is?
I did.
And I don't know, you know, I just, since you guys were here, and you're obviously a part of that.
Well, we don't check those. That falls under the jurisdiction of CDOT.
Okay.
I know changing the timing is fairly difficult.
Yeah.
Just from past projects such as the Fields, when they came in, I found people with that. It's my understanding that CDOT's main goal is to keep moving traffic up and down, and the second, or the side streets are secondary as far as the timing goes. However, I'll say the last time I was out here, when the Fields project was going on, I believe that was two or three years ago, I did go out and watch traffic, at least on the south side of the road, for each, in the morning and the evening peaks, and I think the side functions very, very well. At this particular intersection, I guess we're getting a little off topic here, but the main issue that this intersection has is in the morning, the morning peak, people coming down Elgbell Road and trying to make a left turn, trying to go to Aspen, and the problem is, is that actually, the stacking distance between Elgbell Road and Willets, it gets stacked on 82 the entire way. You're probably aware of this. And then, whatever queues up on Elgbell Road isn't able to clear. That's the main problem with this intersection, at least the last time I looked at it. But the south side is pretty good from what I've seen.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for coming out, and your patience.
I guess my assumption is, is that all I really need from the town of Basalt is going to be that right-of-way permit to move forward with this project, but if there's any other questions that come up, please feel free to reach out to me.
Yeah, we'll look for the comms you send out and the releases and all that, and, yeah, stay informed.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have our council actions. Item 7A is a public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 21, series of 2025, in ordinance of the town council of the town of Basalt, Colorado, amending chapter four, article seven of the Basalt Municipal Code to implement ballot question 3A, approving an increase in the town's lodging tax by 2%. And that's Jeff.
Thanks, Mayor. As you will recall, the council referred to the voters a lodging tax increase of 2% that was, then, the election was at the November election, that passed, and so that lodging tax is effective January 1. And this is an ordinance just to codify that additional tax, so it's clear that it's in place and goes alongside the other lodging taxes that are, the two, the original two and the additional two that are already on the books. And then there was just one other change that we made along with it, just to be, to help clarify the restrictions on uses for each of the 2, 2, and 2% lodging taxes. So happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, this is a public hearing, so recommend you take any public comment and go from there.
Thanks, Jeff. It is a public hearing. It is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. And if anyone would like to come up and make some comments on this ordinance, they're welcome to, online or in person. And I don't see any, anyone doing that. So, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up for questions or comments from council. If you don't have any, entertain a motion, too.
Mayor, I move the Town Council adopt ordinance number twenty-one, series of twenty twenty-five, on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Pam, will you please call the roll?
Yes, absolutely. Let's get to a sheet here. Okay. Let's begin with Rick Stevens.
Yes.
Angel Dupre-Buchard.
Yes.
Ryan Slack.
Yes.
David Knight.
Yes.
Dieter Schindler.
Yes.
Thank you, Dieter. Hannah Berman.
Yes.
And Angela Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is item seven B, which is our first reading of ordinance number twenty-two, series of twenty twenty-five, in ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Basalt, Colorado, amending Town Code section sixteen dash one eight-eight to regulation, to regulate the use of non-functional turf, non-functional artificial turf and invasive plant species as landscape elements for development and redevelopment projects within the Town of Basalt. Carlton, you are up for this one.
Good evening, council. As the mayor introduced, I'm here to present a draft ordinance number twenty-two, series of twenty twenty-five, regarding regulation of non-functional turf grass, non-functional artificial turf and invasive plant species. This would be a local regulation based on new state regulation. And the impetus for this ordinance is to bring the Town of Basalt into compliance with that state regulation. For a little bit of background, in twenty twenty-four, the state senate bill twenty-four double oh five passed with bipartisan support, was signed into law by Governor Polis. This bill aimed to address the impacts of both climate change and pressures on Colorado's fragile water resources by limiting specific uses of resource-intensive landscape elements, including non-functional turf, non-functional artificial turf, and invasive plant species. Specifically, this senate bill applies to commercial, institutional, and industrial properties, as well as state-owned properties, common interest community properties such as homeowner association common areas, street rights of way, parking lots, medians, and transportation corridors. SB twenty-four double oh five applies to all new development on the aforementioned properties and redevelopment, which requires a permit, plan check, or design review, resulting in a disturbance of more than fifty percent of the landscaped area. In twenty twenty-five, House Bill twenty-five one one one-three passed, expanding and modifying the requirements of the previous and aforementioned senate bill. While SB twenty-four double oh five prohibited all artificial turf, House Bill twenty-five one one one-three defined functional artificial turf as distinct from non-functional artificial turf. And allows functional art, artificial turf, so think of playing surfaces with artificial turf. The modifications to the senate bill via this year's house bill are included in the ordinance and must be adopted by January first of twenty twenty-six. There are additional stipulations in the house bill which require local entities such as the Town of Basalt to adopt those measures. Those, we still have two years for. Those will be required to be adopted by January first of twenty twenty-eight. Those items are not addressed in this draft ordinance. While the local implementation of the senate bill and certain elements of the house bill are required, the Town Council may suggest local amendments to further regulate the use of turf, artificial turf, and invasive plants. However, I will note that the Town Arborist and Horticulturalist, as well as the Parks Foreman, have proposed no additional local amendments at this time. And again, we will have two years before needing to come back and address the, the rest of the measures in this year's house bill. So, hopefully, we'll have a couple of years to kind of see how the initial rollout works and to see if we would like to further regulate the landscape elements discussed herein. There are no related town statute or town actions which prompted this. Again, it comes from the state regulation. And you have an attachment of the draft ordinance as part of your packet this evening.
Great, thank you, Carlton. Any questions or?
Can you break this down into like, what it actually is?
Yeah, so, so think of it as.
After like, reading through, I'm like, what are we like? Are we banning the installation of all of our?
The statute's a definitional, like, you know, it's like, you're a police detective drawing strings across.
Yeah, I'm like, well, where do, what does this apply, like?
So, what it applies to is, think about when you drive around town in the summer and all of the places where people don't use turf that are irrigated. And so, the hope of this regulation is to minimize those areas. And again, that are used in commercial spaces, industrial spaces, and your like HOA medians that are irrigated and are, don't have a function. So, again, that's the definition of functional versus non-functional. And so, the hope is to, you know, if you have big play spaces at schools and in parks, those are able to be retained for active uses. But the passive uses, where you're just looking at Kentucky bluegrass, the hope from the state is to regulate and to minimize those places where we're just putting water out to be evaporated and, and to, yeah, to not have a functional use. So, that was kind of the, the aim of this.
I'll add to this, that a lot of it is like, it's like medium grass. So, like, if, I think the Midland project complies with this because it's all native plant species, but if we were putting like, bluegrass and the median out on part of the Midland project, that wouldn't be permitted as part, under the new statute. Same within like HOA common areas, commercial areas, industrial developments. It's, you're limited to kind of native species and, I forget the term of art under the statute, one of the definitions related to tree species, but.
There's a huge.
There's little strips of grass that you might.
Little greenways and stuff like that.
And, yeah, there, there's a huge list of acceptable plant species as a part of this that the state has established. And then additionally, I would note that this is not retroactive. So, it's for new development and redevelopment, as I mentioned, of over fifty percent. So, the, the hope is to not make this onerous on property owners. But if you come back and do a huge landscape redevelopment, we're hoping to see, you know, that native species are prefer, are, you know, given a preference here. And again, this is coming down from the state. So, just making sure that the town is in compliance.
One question I had, it was kind of curious about, and not that I would think it would be aesthetic to put, aesthetically pleasing to put artificial turf in a median or something, but like, why, why does the, the state statute even go there about putting artificial turf like you'd have on a field in a non-functional? Like, who would do that? Like, why, why would it? I don't, maybe not why someone would do that.
You actually do see it, as somebody who's coming from the private side, you know, folks would use that often for, in multifamily buildings. I don't know why.
Why you'd regulate it?
So, I think, again, it was a step back in the house bill from where the senate bill started, where the senate was, the senate bill outright banned all artificial turf.
Ah, okay.
And then, so the, to step back was to make it even with standard turf grass. So, that both, in both cases, functional turf and artificial turf grass is allowed, non-functional is not allowed.
And what's the, what's the rub with artificial turf in general, I guess? Why, why would, just the drainage?
It's drainage and heat containment there as well.
Okay, so not water, but other considerations?
Right.
Okay, thanks. All right.
Mayor, I move the Town Council approve ordinance number twenty-two.
Sorry, this is a public hearing as well.
I don't think this one is.
Oh, didn't notice it is a public hearing.
We have it, okay.
We're good, we'll do it.
It's second reading.
Second reading, we'll get it. I'm sure it'll be, still in the room.
Mayor, I move the Town Council approve ordinance number twenty-two, series of twenty twenty-five, on first reading and set public hearing and second reading for January thirteenth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Pam, will you please call the roll?
Sure. Excuse me, let's begin with Angela Anderson.
Yes.
Rick Stevens.
Yes.
Angel Dupre-Buchard.
Yes.
Ryan Slack.
Yes.
David Knight.
Yes.
Dieter Schindler.
Yes.
And Hannah Berman.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, thanks, Carlton. Next up is item seven C, which is resolution number sixty-two, series of twenty twenty-five. Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Basalt, Colorado, levying general property taxes to help defray the cost of government for the Town of Basalt for the twenty twenty-six budget year. And Doug, Jenny, and Jeff are on the line for this one, so floor is yours.
Jenny went home, so, and I'll just take it. Jeff, you want to add? You're my source of truth. So, the, there was something in the, your packet for preliminary, and then there was amended final version that's also available. Differences between the two are rather de minimis. Just to recap what this levy's all about, it's basically three types of levies over two counties. There's a general mill levy, there's a bond levy, and then there's an abatement levy. The general levy is determined by taking the assessed value times the set mill rate, which is five point nine five seven. That rate does not change. That is, that's flat. So, as long as property taxes are going up, then it's just a question of multiplication and the property taxes would be higher. Second, the, the bond levy, that number is fixed at nine hundred and fifty thousand. So, you're not doing any multiplication, you're actually dividing. You're taking nine hundred and fifty thousand and dividing it into the assessed value to determine what the mill levy is. So, as property taxes go up, the mill levy goes down. And that's what's happened here in this current year. And then there's an abatement levy, which is like nickels in a parking lot here. It's like twenty-two thousand dollars. And that's just a portion based upon the values of the various properties that are in each county. Just to recap, the assessed value for Pittkin County and Eagle was three hundred and fifty-four million. That compares to prior year number of three hundred and sixteen million. So, that was an increase of about twelve percent. The, again, the, there's, if you look at the difference between the two, there isn't really much of one, other than the fact that there was like a, Pittkin had a slight adjustment in the assessed value, a reduction, rather, of like thirty thousand dollars. So, at the end of the day, running through all the math, it was about a difference of eight hundred and forty dollars in the general levy and six hundred dollars total of, across the board, so. And this compares to what I had budgeted, or what was budgeted, of two million, one hundred and twelve thousand dollars of revenue compared to what the number is, is two million, one hundred and ten combined. So, it's like a twelve hundred dollars difference. So, it's pretty straightforward. So, we need to have this certified by the fifteenth. And I need to have approval of council before I can certify the levy.
Thanks, Doug. So, any que, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Nope.
Any questions or comments for Doug? Pretty straightforward.
Mayor, I move that the Town Council adopt resolution number sixty-two, series of twenty twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Pam, will you please call the roll?
Yes, absolutely. Let's begin with Ryan Slack.
Yes.
David Knight.
Yes.
Dieter Schindler.
Yes.
Hannah Berman.
Yes.
Angela Anderson.
Yes.
Rick Stevens.
Yes.
Angel Dupre-Buchard.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Doug. Next up is item seven D, which is our first reading of ordinance number twenty-three, series of twenty twenty-five, in ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Basalt, Colorado, approving an easement agreement related to a water line at one thirty-five East Homestead Drive. And Justin, this is yours, so floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you for your time. It is standard practice for utilities to have an easement typically centered for a certain depth or width and so that you can excavate or operate your, your utility. And so, the town has a water line running north-south that connects East Homestead Drive to Midland Avenue, right near one thirty-five East Homestead Drive. So, that particular property is in for building permit. And as part of the review, we noticed that there is not an express easement for the town's water line. So, this is a perfect opportunity to get an easement in place. So, a standard water line easement for the Town of Basalt is twenty feet, so ten feet on either side of the pipe. In this particular case, we cannot get the ten feet on that particular side because of structure that's in the way. So, we can get three feet of width along the entire north-south direction of the property. So, it is in, of our best interests, as well as the property owner's best interest, to get this easement, and they've been agreeable throughout this process. So, we're just cleaning that up so legally it can be recorded.
Great, all right. Well, this is not, this, this one's not a public hearing. So, any questions or comments from council on this?
Mayor, I move that the Town Council approve ordinance number twenty-three, series of twenty twenty-five, on first reading and set the public hearing in second reading for January thirteenth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Pam, will you please call the roll?
Absolutely. All right, let's begin with Dieter Schindler.
Yes.
Hannah Berman.
Yes.
Angela Anderson.
Yes.
Rick Stevens.
Yes.
Angel Dupre-Buchard.
Yes.
Ryan Slack.
Yes.
And David Knight.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Yeah, thank you.
And our next topic is, our agenda item is item seven E, resolution number sixty-three, series of twenty twenty-five. It's a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Basalt, Colorado, approving a contract for the construction of Phase One of the Confluence Park Safe Routes to School Project. And this is Michelle and Catherine.
Yeah. Thanks, James, for pulling that up. And thanks, Mayor and council, for having me this evening. Tonight, I'm presenting to you a contract for the construction of Phase One of the Safe Routes to School Project. This project was born out of a need to address the aging improvements on Emma Bridge. James, if you want to switch to the next slide. The first phase, um, first, sorry, hold on, there you go. As a first phase of the process, the existing improvements, which were completed in twenty twelve on the bridge, were removed so that the existing conditions could be completely understood. And what revealed itself during that process was significant utility and drainage issues. And unfortunately, those drainage issues over the years had also led to some deterioration of the bridge structure itself. So, the improvements themselves kind of started to expand a bit as we looked into this further. Next slide, please, James. Along with this effort, staff partnered with Design Workshop to create some concepts by engaging the local Girl Scout troop. I know you all are familiar with this, as they came by recently to receive their badge, which is a really great effort. And these playful concepts inspired the temporary installations, which we've seen. James, if you want to go to the next slide. Those temporary installations were installed over the last two summers. They included those colorful crosswalks, some colorful bollards, and also some movable planters that were in place to help simulate some of the improvements that might happen in the future. The project area is a main pedestrian route for schoolchildren as they travel to and from the elementary and middle school campus campuses. Staff was able to meet with leadership at the schools to gain their input on the project, along with the SRO that stays at that intersection to help schoolchildren tra, um, cross-traffic oftentimes. And we also engaged the parents of the district through an online survey last year. The project also aligns with the town's goals of becoming a certified bike-friendly community as demonstrated through our, our Bike-to-Work Days, supported the school's Walk Bike and Roll Day. And also, earlier this fall, I made a presentation to a national webinar about kind of how, how we've moved this project forward, engaged the schoolchildren and, and, and the Girl Scouts themselves. So, we've had some significant outreach already for the project. And the next screen, James? So, this fall, Phase One of the Confluence Park Safe Routes to School Project was put out to bid. We received bids from two well-qualified contractors. We met with both bidders to review the scope and budget and specifically identified some of this bridge decking work in deterioration and how to address this in a cost-effective way. Ultimately, after meeting with the lower bidder and their subcontractor, we were able to reduce the overall contract by about six percent before bringing the contract to you tonight. Next slide, please, James. This first phase of the project will include the area shown before you, and include ADA-accessible sidewalks, pedestrian and bike safety improvements, enhanced landscaping and lighting, safer crosswalks, and a more modernized drainage system, so we can prevent some of those issues from happening again. Next phase, or slide, James. And as I mentioned earlier, this is just a first phase of the project. This second phase is a little bit more complicated, as it's encumbered by the CDOT grant funding that you'll receive this year. And you may have noted in your packet, we made that a first grant application in November twenty twenty-four, and we've been slowly but persistently moving through the CDOT process, but it takes some significant amount of time. So this second phase won't be prepared to be bid out until later this year, potentially starting construction either in late twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven. So just to give you a sense of kind of where this project lies in Phase One versus Phase Two. But tonight, staff is recommending that council approved, the town manager, to sign a contract for Phase One of the Safe Routes to School project, as outlined in the draft resolution before you. And I'm happy to address any questions you all have.
Thanks, Catherine.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments?
Is it safe to assume that the native grass seed mix and the wildflower seed mix called out in those non-functional areas will comply with what we just asked?
That would be our intent on all of our town projects. We tried to do the low-water stuff, but yes.
That rocks.
Could you pull up the Phase One project scope? It's page ninety-nine?
Yeah, just a quick second.
Oh, yeah, that one. Well, I guess I'm still just having trouble wrapping my head around, what is the exact scope of this project for this amount of money? It just, I'm just still just mind-blown that we're taking a project that was completed twelve, thirteen years ago. Totally scraped it, and no one's accountable for that. None of, no one here was involved in it, totally understand that. But it just seems like, and I think we're taking the steps to do it right, it's just insanely frustrating as being here, and then also as just a town person that--
Yeah, I mean, the work that was done previously was mostly, I did a little research on it, it was mostly from a volunteer group, and all best intentions were made. I think that moving forward, especially with the deterioration of the bridge, I mean, bridge structural work is complicated and expensive, and there's and so a significant portion of the bid amount is that decking repair. And as we learned on Midland, no reason to invest in those surface infrastructure improvements if the utilities and the base is deteriorated. So we need to make sure that that bridge is in stable and long-term condition before we're going to address anything on the surface. So, I mean, from a cost perspective, a lot of the scope is that bridge decking itself, both removing it and then replacing it with an appropriate an appropriate polymer concrete, which comes with its own kind of complications. We have specialty subcontractor and designers involved. But then as far as scope itself, also one of the complicating factors here is with that CDOT funding. We're trying to keep, we're trying to include all of the improvements that require work within an easement in this scope. As you may recall, a couple meetings ago, I brought forward to you a couple easements that we needed from the Seven-Eleven and other property for some of these improvements. So, James, yeah, if you could go to the south side near the at the south side of the bridge with your cursor. Anyway, it goes from basically where the, where the bridge begins, all the improvements across the bridge, but then narrows that entry into the Seven-Eleven, because as you can see now in the aerial photo, it's just this expansive paved area, and kids kind of arrive in that big paved area, and they have gas tank deliveries and, and, you know, garbage trucks and other deliveries of sorts, all kind of moving through there without without rhyme or reason. And so it narrows some of those crosswalks in favor of the pedestrian and bike experience, while also maintaining kind of the turning radius for those essential services. So it includes a bunch of that work, some drainage improvements over to Confluence Park, and then ultimately, it will, it will tie into those intersection improvements, which we hope to do as part of Phase Two. I'm happy to sit down, you know--
No, I see it, I just-- and the, and I understand, you guys are trying to, we got to improve it, it just-- I have sticker shock, and that's not your fault.
How long can we expect that these repairs, like with the new polymer concrete decking? How long can we expect that to last? Like, what's the lifespan? How long until we would have to do something like this again? Because obviously thirteen years is not--
No, that is, that is not the hope moving forward. It would be decades-long, you know, that, that would be the hope, yeah.
James, will you flip to the slide before this one? Because I, I, I think it just might be helpful to in understanding some of the costs associated here. The, one, there's only one subcontractor on the western slope that does bridge repair. So this is a very specialized activity here to remove any of the failing concrete. And what's a little bit tricky to see here, but there's, it's illustrated, is there are three different levels of demolition in that concrete and in that surfacing on the bridge that need to be removed. And the challenge is that we'll only know the exact specifications of how much in each section will need to be just the surface versus level two versus level three. And all of that has to happen while maintaining the integrity of the bridge. So it's just this really specialized activity, if I'm saying all the things right, translating engineer into planner words. But that is, it's surprisingly expensive, and that's what we've been struggling with and why this project has taken a little bit longer than we had anticipated.
And we want to make sure we're doing it right this time, for all the reasons that you guys are concerned about.
So is that, does that mean there's some unknowns in the structure that would be uncovered and that you could spend more money?
I would say that we need to go through a sounding exercise with this. We met on-site with the subcontractor, APCO, that will be doing this work. They feel fairly confident in their, in their surface observations of the numbers, but they do need to go through a sounding exercise to, to determine kind of what percentage of the bridge will require these various levels. But both the primary contractors, Doosman, Giribas, and APCO, their subcontractor, feel confident in the numbers brought forward tonight. But we never know, but we hope that--
What's the difference if it goes to level three all the way across there?
I don't have that number in front of me.
But the number we have, the one point one-nine and change, that's inclusive of like worst-case scenario, right? It's a guaranteed max price.
Yeah, I mean, if they find significant damage, you know--
Unless what?
Unless there's a change order.
But there's--
If you need maximum price, doesn't mean the maximum price can't be exceeded.
But if the, the scope, like, can you comment on that? If the worst-case scenario up there--
Yeah, I mean, if the, if we find more damage than, than is contemplated, twenty percent of the bridge requires a Class Three removal, and thirty percent of the bridge requires a Class One repair, and then Class Two is in there as well. So I, everyone in the team, you know, is a thought, it was well-thought-through process. There is some risk there, but I don't, I have to move forward. The, the good thing is, right now, this bid came in, as you mentioned, one point one-nine million, and we do have more than that in our budget, combined this year and going into twenty twenty-six. So I feel very confident that any work would be within budget for this year, or this year and next year.
Where are those percentage, those assumptions, are they documented in the contract somewhere? Maybe I missed it, the--
They are documented in the, in the bid details, which I, I didn't include all the attachments to the contract, but have to provide those if you'd like.
So that is something, if, if those assumptions don't hold, then all bets are off with the guaranteed maximum price?
I wouldn't say all bets are off, but those--
The guaranteed maximum price could be amended with a change order.
Yeah, which I feel would be appropriate, given the number of experts that we've had review and give their expert opinions on how it would be fair to price this at this point.
Right, and additionally, we're, we're recommending to contract with a known contractor who has served the town well over multiple infrastructure projects, so this is a lower risk, if you will.
All that settles in our brains. Can you comment on the twenty twenty-five budget? I hear we have money in the twenty twenty-five budget. I'm like, what is left in the post-budget, if anything? We haven't seen a budget amendment to move any additional funds. Right now, we have a structurally balanced budget. Correct me if I'm wrong, more or less, in twenty twenty-six. So you know what I mean? Like, that, that's going to be twenty twenty-six money ultimately, so I just want to kind of double-click on that to understand what's left in twenty twenty-five and how we would--
Well, twenty twenty-five isn't over yet, but if it were, if it were to end today, I believe we would have, in the post-budget or post-allotment of money, like, of still two and a half million dollars. And that's likely to be LLM. We'll likely have more than that. As far as this particular project, I recall the budget for this in twenty twenty-five being like five hundred thousand dollars. We've spent, at least last time I looked at it, it was about a hundred thousand. So we were carrying four hundred thousand dollars of twenty twenty-five budget into twenty twenty-six. And I believe what we had budgeted in twenty twenty-six was one point six million dollars for the Confluence. So this, this project is one-two, and we have one-six as a budget. We'd still have money to--
Still, yeah, we definitely still have money. I'm just, so how much of the, how much would be budgeted for twenty twenty-five, and how much have we spent?
I believe it was five hundred budgeted, and I think a hundred was spent. But again, that number is probably sixty days old.
So is--
Wasn't OTAC under contract from, for the work, and DWI participated on it free, I guess?
We have a contract with OTAC for the design work on the project.
And wasn't that around a hundred and eighty thousand?
I don't have that design budget in front of me at the moment.
It seems like they got a change order on that OTAC contract we approved a while back. It was a pretty significant increase. It wasn't, it was over a hundred thousand, the total contract, if I remember.
Total contract was over a hundred thousand dollars. We did have to do a change order when we broke the project into, into two phases. We'll also need to, you know, pay for some services as far as their contract administration for the middle review, things like that, through construction, also materials testing, but all these, all these services are standard practice and remain within the budget that we currently have approved.
So we have five hundred thousand budgeted. We, as sixty days ago, we spent a hundred. We had a, there's, sounds like there's room in the, I mean, in the budget remaining, not necessarily, we don't know the numbers--
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe we're gonna, we're not gonna breach the twenty twenty-five budget number for this project.
So some portion could, will be carried over, but we, what we have in the twenty twenty-six budget is one point six million, which exceeds this by, you know, several hundred thousand. So there's room in less.
Well, this is only Phase One.
Well, I know, that's--
That's all we--
That's what we have to work with, is the one-six, so I mean, like, the, the other way to say that is, we don't have the money for Phase Two in twenty twenty-six at this point.
That's correct.
Unless we did some kind of exercise that free up funds from somewhere else.
That's the CDOT grant portion of it, though, right? This is two?
I'm sorry, the CDOT--
That's the CDOT grant portion, Phase Two?
CDOT grant money will help Phase Two. It won't cover Phase Two completely.
How much is it?
We're still in design, working through details--
You don't know what the grant amount is?
Oh, the grant amount is five hundred and seventy-some-odd thousand.
So between the grant and the five hundred, the four hundred thousand that's left over now, from one-six to one-one-nine is four hundred. You have a grant of five hundred, six hundred thousand from CDOT, potentially? So is there a million one in the kitty, so to speak? No?
I think you're conflating the CDOT project with the Confluence Park.
Yeah, no--
CDOT is street, so the street--
Right, right.
So the CDOT money is--
Was the one-six just for Phase One, or was it for Phase One and Two?
The one-six is, well, it was intended to, to help the project along. We knew to some extent, we're, we're caught, a bit caught up in the CDOT grant process and how long that's taking and, and the changes that CDOT is suggesting. So I don't think anyone would want to bring forward a Phase Two until we're secure in how we might fund that and make sure it fits with our strategic plan. There's no intention of that. So I think moving forward with Phase One, we felt comfortable moving Phase, forward with Phase One. You know, we're in good financial standing as far as what we have budgeted and what was contemplated, and especially given the significant damage we discovered on the bridge. As these projects go, there is a number available, number of variables always up in the air, whether it be the damage or the CDOT process and so on. So we'll make sure, you know, Phase Two is in line with, with the goals of council before, before we bring that forward in the future.
Okay, well, just, just a little bit of history. That was a volunteer effort with Rappaport and Harry Teague. And it basically was triggered because we convinced Pittkin County to give the money to Eagle County to build the Midland Bridge. But the condition of that bridge has always been pretty rough. In fact, it's a choke point on the river, and we had to go in and stabilize the piers, and that boulder-grouted riprap underneath there was part of that process. So there was a big investment to maintain that bridge and turn it into a pedestrian amenity a long time ago, more than twelve or fifteen years, I think. So this is a consequence, perhaps, of being broke when we put the surface on it and to turn it into a safe path to school, basically. And not, not, and then, you know, the extra expense of stabilizing the footings was unknown at the time, too. So that's, a lot of money was sunk into that, and it's, it is a significant issue for the river deposition, things like that, as it flows through the park. So the town does have years and dollars spent on it for a good purpose. And we, I think most of us just want to be certain that we can finish it. I understand CDOT. I was wondering why they were participating in the first place, but now I get the picture, because they don't own the right-of-way any longer. And if we can't meet their standards and it becomes, and they want to fund their standards, that's a different story. But if we have to get half the money and build it to their standard, that's, makes me feel, you know, like, why did we take over the right-of-way? So, I mean, that, that's hanging out there. And Confluence Park is, you know, obviously a critical piece of the puzzle, too. So I think we're just trying to straighten it out a little bit among the other priorities we have. What if you went direct to APCO? Are they the majority of the one point one?
No.
No, okay. Seems like they would be, but maybe not. Well, I guess the off-bridge stuff, drainage, et cetera, that's all broken down in the bid.
Seems like having more budget info would be good to help us all digest what's where, who's giving what money, why it's phased, or what's part of each phasing.
Or, and what we don't know, too, right? Like, hey, this is, there's a blank spot here, like, as far as what's coming. And I think, though, I mean, just listening to all this, if we're gonna, I'll save my question for you after I make the comment. The benefits to this phase by themselves, I think, stand on their own, you know what I mean? In other words, if we do this and can't get to Phase Two at some point soon, it doesn't negate any of the work that's done here, right? Because if nothing else, we're discharging the children on the, on the school side of the bridge in a better spot. We just want to make a better path than to get to the intersection in the future. But hey, we fixed the bridge's deteriority, we've got that. So I, I'm comfortable with the phasing, and even if there's a break in, in the work as we figure out funding and work with CDOT and whatever else has to happen, I just think-- I just think, so that means I'm comfortable with this as it is now as a Phase 1, but I, we do want to understand, I think, where, you know, what are the other pieces? Where's a missing piece? We don't know how much it's going to cost, when is, you know, we think things are going to come into clarity, and et cetera. But I think even if this Phase 1 were just a standalone project, it makes sense just to do it, because it's, the bridge is in a rough state, as you put, and we need to fix that, and we want to, we can improve kind of how people walk across it. And we've got the money. I guess, when will we, my question is kind of a detail. When would we know how much is left over from the 2025 budget, like, a couple months into '26, or?
Well, we ran our last, we're gonna rerun our last AP here this week or so. So we're gonna close out December, and then whatever accruals there'll be. Well, there'll be some accruals related to this, I'm sure. So my guess, make a long story longer here. It would be sometime in January.
Okay. So fill in that piece as far as the 2025 budget, and then we gotta look at Phase 2 and all those parts. That's.
But just to be clear, we won't have, we won't have Phase 2 in a point of complete design that's ready for pricing until June of next year. So this is very much, you know, a standalone project that we can complete and be proud of. And we'll make sure that once we have a project that's fully designed and embedded and has gone through other processes, you know, not the least of which is making sure the strategic plan of council is in line with Phase 2, we'll be back in front of you to discuss that later. So there's.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine, I think. We just want to know, like, hey, what's, later on, what's the timeline as we're doing updates on the bridge and all that stuff, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, oh, sorry, go ahead.
When would this work start, Phase 1?
Probably March. Well, there's a number of materials that have a long lead time, so we'll get those going right away. And then, as soon as weather allows in March, we'll get moving. Likely March, I should say.
And it'll take?
Three to four months.
Hopefully for next school year.
Yes.
The '26, '27 school year.
That would be great.
Can I just ask one clarifying budgeting question? All right, so this is funded for 2025, and money that's in the post-fund budgeted appropriated for this project for 2025, there's 1.6 in the 2026 budget appropriated for use for projects within the safest-to-school scope.
That's correct.
In the parking lot, there's Phase 2, money for Phase 2 of the project that would need to go through a supplemental budget and appropriation process. It's not that the money's not there, it's just not appropriated. Is that right?
Yeah, the only thing that's been appropriated for 2026 is 1.6.
Okay, so just to clarify, for when Phase 2 comes along, again, it's not that the money's not there, it just hasn't been appropriated yet for this purpose. And this was a kind of the change at the end of the budgeting process?
We'd have to appropriate, but we'd also want to look at, like, what's the, you know, revenue into that fund and expenditure, capital expenditure, and is there an offsetting, is there offsetting revenue into that budget? I mean, I know we have reserves, but do we have?
I think it's fund balance, right?
The fund balance on Post is projected to be two and a half million dollars.
But that's our reserve. Do we, I don't think that's the fundamental question. Do we want to?
It's not our reserve, it's just unspent money. Unspent Post money is two and a half million. It's free.
But, is, I guess, let me just put it a different way. With what we have in the budget for this year, is, does that more or less match what the revenues into Post will be?
This year being 2025 or?
I'm sorry, 2026.
For 2026, we had budgeted 3 million going into the Post, and we embargoed 20% off the top for maintenance. So really, 2.4 million was the capital number for Post. And that was what was budgeted for 2026. Included in that 2.4 million was the 1.6 for this project.
Right.
We put a bunch of other things in the parking lot. Albany Park, there was the Rocks Park, there were some other projects there that have been various stages of design and engineering aspects of the project. There's probably four or five things in the parking lot. Around the roundabout over on 82, that's in the parking lot. So the question was, and the question will become, and the question remains, is that when we take something out of the parking lot and we actually are going to be executing it, there'll be a council decision at that time to deploy those funds. And by deploying those funds, it would be a vis-a-vis a budget amendment for 2026.
Yeah, no, I get that. So, but I'm looking at the budget, and I see 2.5 million.
Right.
And I see 1.6 of that is this project.
Correct.
And I see other projects that encompass the rest of it. So we say we have 2.5 million, only 1.6, if I'm being dense, tell me, but I see 1.6, and then a bunch of other stuff to take the rest to get us to 2.5.
That's correct.
So where would we get more than 1.6 without cutting something else?
Because, because we're going to start the year with two and a half million in the bank.
So we would spend, we'd have to spend more than, what's coming in this year for Post? What do you forecast?
3 million.
3 million. So we have another 500-ish?
And we're gonna probably spend, of that 3 million, we're gonna probably spend, I don't know, 2, 3, 2, 2. So we're gonna build our net, we're gonna build our net.
We have a little bit of wiggle room. I just, what I don't want to do is have be, and I don't, maybe I'm the only one, but I don't want to spend more than we're taking.
I don't want a deficit spend either. That's why we changed the way we were budgeting the number.
Yeah.
And we're starting with, if you think about it, we're starting with two and a half million dollars. That's really representative of the full-year revenue that the Post would be, because Post revenue is 3 million bucks. And 3 million, you take 20% of 3 million is, what's that, $600,000, right, for maintenance of parts?
For maintenance.
So you got, we got 2.4 million of fresh money coming in.
Fresh money coming in.
If we don't do anything else, if we spend no money in 2026, we'd have 2.5 plus 2.4. We'd have close to 5 million dollars. But we only budgeted 2 and 1/2. So if we just spent the budgeted number, we'd end the year with 2 and 1/2 million.
And just, but when money doesn't get spent in a prior year, and it gets, because a budget, or because a project is not ready to proceed, or for whatever reason, and it's carried forward as fund balance, that money's still there to allow for those projects to occur in future year. It's not to only spend what you're bringing in, and then if you spend less, end up with a growing fund balance that never gets spent on these projects that are part of the council's strategic plan. So that's just.
No, I get that, but I don't want to spend more than what we're bringing. I just want to make sure that we're not.
But I'm just.
But eventually, if you wanted to spend all of your Post money, because it is tax dollars.
Or more than's coming in, because you've built this fund balance to spend on these projects that might be more than.
You saved up some money to actually.
So, yeah, but that's a, that's a decision with intent, not like we get caught out and have to do it, you know?
I mean, it's no different than accumulating money in a general fund that ultimately then will be used for the police public works building. It's excess funds that have a stated purpose. So we have, you know, we're gonna end the year, and I'll give you the exact number sometime in January when we reconcile our 1231 numbers, but I'm thinking we have comfortably above 2 and 1/2 million of free cash that was Post revenue, unspent, right, that we're starting the year with.
In addition to what we're gonna bring in.
Right.
Yeah. So, I, I mean, I'm just not articulating well. I just want to make sure we are expending that, that intent, if we're gonna spend more than we bring in, because it makes sense. That's all I'm trying to say. Not, it just happens because we're spending more than we are bringing in, and it just works out that way.
I think what I'm asking is, are we spending more that's been allocated? And it sounds like we could be. In 2025, yeah, potentially. 2025, what was the allocation from Post in 2025 for the work we've already done to get to here? Was there a number that was planned to be spent on OTAC and all the other stuff that goes on?
I think we, I think we budgeted more than what our projected revenue was, to answer your question. And so we did.
But that was for all the Post projects. I'm just asking about this specific one, because you have a list in there with budgets attached to each one, whether it's a boat ramp, or trails, or anything else.
Right, and we are, in 2025, I'm comfortable in saying that we will not, the town will not be spending more on this Confluence Park project than what was budgeted.
For 2025?
For 2025.
Okay.
And what seems to be, was being presented now, based on the information we know now, that would likely be the case in 2026 as well.
Potentially, yeah.
Well, yeah. Well, for Phase 1. Phase 2, I think, is, maybe, we were talking about two different things, but Phase 2 would be.
It wasn't quantified.
It would be.
Phase 2 needs a whole nother budget.
Yeah, a whole nother budget that's not in here. I know there's 2 and 1/2 million we're bringing in. There's 2 and 1/2 million we're bringing in. We'd have to decide if we wanted to use that for Phase 2 or not, and budget it.
Or something else.
Yeah, or something else. It's there, but I mean, like, so that's, we just have to decide if that's what we want to use it for, given everything else that's in the parking lot, given uncertainties in the future, et cetera, et cetera.
And given our capacity to actually execute some of the projects to begin with.
Yeah.
But that's right.
I think there's some opportunity to clear it up a little bit, going out of, you know, ending at 2025 with some kind of pretty firm picture on where we stand today, where we're going on Phase 1, and come back, you know, in a couple weeks or whatever, and report on that. I think that there's been a ton of money invested in that place over there, and the population that uses it has increased 300 times over 20 years ago. And it's a key to the case as far as connectivity that we all talk about, and it's internal to downtown, which is really interesting to me, because we sometimes extend ourselves out into the edges of the urban growth boundary when focusing on this, which is not only benefits school kids, but it benefits everybody else that I see walking from the bus stop over Elk Run. So I just think, we just want to make sure we're all accountable to the decision of how much money it's going to cost. CDOT is CDOT. I don't want to really end up with CDOT standards in the middle of Basalt, necessarily. So if we have to sacrifice some of that, and, you know, develop our own public work standards for intersections and things like that, that are at least congruent with CDOT, but not as expensive as they seem to be. I mean, you look at things that are going on with this Crown Mountain deal. So I, you know, I'm getting a better comfort level for it. And there's a lot on the menu to do. So is that something you guys can do, and kind of come back with?
I guess I just want to be clear.
Like OTAC, for example?
Yeah. So going into this year, we made a budget number that was clear, and our design scope has stayed within that budget number. We've now come forward with Phase 1. That Phase 1 is within our budget number for 2026, and we have, and there doesn't seem to be a way that we would ever go beyond that. So, and we don't have a plan for how we bring Phase 2 forward yet, and we wouldn't do so until we had a time when we had a budget clear. So going into next year, I guess I just want to make sure, happy to get you any more information you want, but I think at this point, all we have to bring forward is a Phase 1, and I think we're in a strong position, coming forward to you with a very reputable contractor and subcontractor to complete the scope within our budget and deliver us a product that I think we all would enjoy into the future. So can you help? Can, but I'm, can you help?
I don't have an issue with the contractor. I'm just trying to chase the tail here of the project, so that we can vote on this either tonight or push it off until.
Oh, let's hold on.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with Phase 1. Like, it's just that, it's a good, it's a good conversation. We need, we just, I think you guys understand where we're coming from, as far as wanting to understand Phase 2 before. And I think we're on the same page that you're not gonna bring it forward until we have it. But Phase 1 in and of itself stands alone as far as its benefits. It's not like a sunk cost if we never do Phase 2. So I'm comfortable with it. Sorry, Ryan, go ahead.
No, it's fine. I think there's just confusion of where some of the money is, and I think we're all just in sticker shock, and it's fine. It's gonna, it's gonna be a great product, and I think none of us knew how bad the bridge was and all the inner workings of that. So if anyone, if everyone's done, I'm ready to make the motion.
Go for it.
Okay, here we go. Mayor, I move the Town Council of basalt resolution number 63 of series of 2025.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Pam, will you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Let's begin with Hannah Berman.
Yes.
Angela Anderson.
Yes.
Rick Stevens.
Yep.
Angel Dupre-Buchard.
Yes.
Ryan Slack.
Yes.
David Knight.
Yes.
Dieter Schindler.
Yes.
Dieter hanging in there.
Thank you, Dieter.
You guys are hanging in there.
Hope you guys are doing well at the Schindler house. Sorry, Pam.
No, that's fine. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Catherine. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you all for the robust discussion. I think, you know, this is, like Doug put, this new process forward, we're gonna have to kind of do a little storming and figure out how to do it. But I truly believe in the long run, this is going to be better for us, as far as how we manage our money and how we do our strategic planning. So thank you all. Okay. Anything else? Are you still up, Catherine? Yeah, you are.
Yeah.
Next up, we have item 7F, public hearing and second reading, ordinance number 20, series of 2025.
This has nothing to do with the budget.
Does it mean we won't make it complex, Catherine?
There's some money somewhere.
In ordinance, the Town Council of Basalt, Colorado, amending Chapter 16, Article 17 and Chapter 18, really, Article 2, related to floodplain map adoption and continued participation in National Flood Insurance Program. And Catherine, you're still in, it's not a hot seat. You're fantastic.
Solidly warm. This is second reading, so I don't have much to add. It's really just an update to our municipal code referencing the correct and newly adopted floodplain maps. I think we went over most of it last week. I didn't receive any questions from the public in the meantime since first reading, but happy to answer any questions you all have.
Any questions? I got your public hearings, so let's go ahead and do that. I'll open the public hearing. If anybody wants to come up for ordinance number 20 and make comments. Floor is open. Floor is open online. There's nobody here making comments, and we'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments for Catherine?
I have one that's kind of been percolating. I know that FEMA and, you know, that agency put out public notices to the residents down on Oak Grove and those areas that are being impacted by this change. And I know that's not a town's responsibility to be the caretakers of our property owners, but sometimes I feel like when these other entities get involved at this level, when they're changing a land use regulation or a statute, that it would behoove Basalt just to put out a little extra effort to make sure that people that are impacted, that we have as neighbors, are noticed and maybe informally, but at least networked somehow. I have a lot of friends that live on that street, and I'm not sure if any of them knew about it, or what it does to their property value, or if it does anything.
We did mailers to everyone that was impacted and hosted a public meeting. It was a little while ago now.
Okay, so that's good. So let's keep that up. You know, we talked about it earlier, about the process of accelerating feedback from the community on other projects. So I think that's a good place to go. It also would be very congruent with the process David just talked about. So that was my only comment. If I get asked later why we didn't tell them, I'll tell them that we did.
Thanks.
So I'll move to, must you close? Did you close the public hearing?
Oh, yeah.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 20, series of 2025.
Sarah, second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Pam, will you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Let us begin with Angela Anderson.
Yes.
Rick Stevens.
Yep.
Angel Dupre-Buchard.
Yes.
Ryan Slack.
Yes.
David Knight.
Yes.
Dieter Schindler.
Yes.
And Hannah Berman.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Catherine. All right, next up, we have our last item, 7G, which is resolution number 64, series of 2025. Resolution of the Town Council of Basalt, Colorado, approving a new governmental agreement with Picken County Sheriff, Picken County for the sheriff's office to provide supplemental law enforcement services within the town. And we have Harper and Erin.
Thank you. Just wanted to say, behind us, too, is Sheriff Boullioni and Undersheriff Burchetta, if any questions you have for them.
Thanks for coming out. Thanks for your patience, too.
Hi, council. So tonight, we're here because the sheriff's office and the police department. Hi, Council, so tonight we're here because, um, the Sheriff's Office and the Police Department have a working relationship, and there have been staffing shortage issues at the Police Department, so the county and the town came to this agreement to, um, have supplemental law enforcement services provided by the Sheriff's Office, and, um, we've reviewed it and sent over, um, or exchanged copies with the Picken County, um, legal team, and there were a few minor changes from what you have in your packet tonight, but we're here to answer any questions and, um, yeah, seeking support for that.
I'll just add one thing to that, like, one of the big drivers of doing this is that, because PD staff's been a little short, is that Jason, our SRO, hasn't been able to be at the high school full-time, and so by Picken County filling in our service gaps, it allowed Jason to return to his full-time position as SRO, and, uh, it's in the interest of the town, the county, to, to see that happen. Um, it's much appreciated.
So does this effectively give Picken County Sheriff's Office jurisdiction in the time limits of Basalt? They're like an arm of our Police Department?
Yeah, under Colorado law, there's, um, there's authority-
Is that overlay?
Yeah, to, um, operate with, outside of your, their jurisdiction-
Okay.
Under an IGA like this. And so they'll, they'll basically just be providing patrol services, emergency response, criminal response, traffic enforcement, um, like the Police Department would be doing.
Maybe patrolling that aggressive driving and speeding on East Valley Road.
I talked to him in the hallway, yep.
And, 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 oh, subdivision.
Yes.
As Erin well knows, my complaint.
Put a non-turf median in there.
Is it functional, if it keeps people from speeding?
Angel's just tied everything together, you know? Full circle, it's just full circle. Awesome.
Well, thanks, Alex and the Sheriff, for willing to step up and help us out, I mean, it's tangible.
I think it's a win-win for all of us.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments or anything from the, the councilors?
Mayor, I move the Town Council to adopt Resolution Number sixty-four, series of twenty twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved in second, if Pam, will you please call the roll?
Absolutely, let us begin with David Knight.
Yes.
Dieter Schindler.
Yes.
Hannah Berman.
Yes.
Angela Anderson.
Yes.
Rick Stevens.
Yep.
Angel Dupre-Buchard.
Yes.
And Ryan Slack.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you all, we don't have a meeting in two weeks, uh, so we'll see y'all in the new, new year. Great holidays, and come to the tree lighting this Friday, see y'all.